Good evening. It is Monday, December 17th, and I call the Maple Plains City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand and join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. So moved. Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Second by Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At this time, I would like to invite the Orno Rotary to the podium to make a donation presentation.
Thank you. We're here tonight from the Rotary. Last year, we had some ideas on what to do with some of our fundraising and had heard about the park renovation, so we gathered a team. And on June the 2nd, we had our first annual Party in the Park event. We had great help from the city, so thank you again. And then, great sponsorships. We probably had forty or so local sponsors. We had good attendance. And we're here tonight to present a check for $9,000.
Woo-hoo!
Woo!
Before we take a picture, I would just like to thank the Orno Rotary and for the partnership that the city has. Together, it's a great service organization that is about helping people and the community for the greater good. So, we appreciate the partnership and are honored to be a part of the Orno Rotary and receive this donation this evening. So, I'm going to invite the council forward and our Rotarians, and we'll take a picture of this. So, while everyone's getting situated, we just want to remind everyone that next year's Party in the Park will be Saturday, June 1st, so mark your calendars and plan to join us again for a great event. Next item of business is our consent agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve items A through E.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Broda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill.
May I pull A accounts payable and D pay request number four for comment and question?
Yes, you may. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, I'm looking to approve letters B, C, and E. All in favor of approving B, C, and E as submitted?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, motion carries. Let's start with item A, Councilmember Fay.
Okay. Bobby, there's two things back on here from previous accounts payable. One is the January through June SALT 2018 as well as the... That was from August, and I believe last month, you pulled a $1,500 Home Depot.
Correct.
So, they automatically get pulled and not paid when...
Yeah, I wanted to put them back on to kind of talk about them a little bit. Just say that, yeah, so the SALT, as I'd mentioned before, was, we had to pay, I mean, we have to pay it because we already used the SALT. It was built after the fact.
But we did not. We have not paid it?
We haven't paid it yet until tonight. And then, the Home Depot, that amount there was Public Works bought a lot of materials from Home Depot. We actually insulated the inside of the water tower around all of our controls in there to bring the life of those controls and that technology to keep the life of that as long as possible. So, they bought those materials and actually did that themselves.
Okay. And, so you were the one that pulled that last month, so you were pulling it to do the investigation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Interstate Power Systems.
Yep.
If my notes are correct, and refresh my memory, how frequently do they come out and do the inspection of these generators?
So, they do an inspection twice a year, and then they do tests on them. They're not inspections. They do like a operating-type test on them once a year. So, it's three times they come out a year total.
How many?
Three times total.
Okay, they do, okay, because that's what my notes show, January, April, and now in December.
Yep.
Okay. That is all I have for accounts payable.
We'll approve A and D at the same time then, so why don't you go ahead with letter D, pay request number four.
Okay, let me see if I can find that. Give me one second. Dan, I'm glad you're here.
Yes.
If my math is correct, on this pay request, we're approximately eighty-three percent complete as far as dollar amount. That is what they've asked to be paid in comparison to what the contract amount is for. We've got a lot of, we've got a lot of items that are slated to be completed in the spring. Being that we're eighty-three percent in the fall, are you comfortable that this is going to remain on budget?
I haven't entered, usually what we, I mean, we can do for your next meeting is kind of talk with our inspector and say, what are the remaining things, like the sod, and can you put an estimate together? But, yeah, historically, costs have come in less than what the bid was. You know, there is the water main, the storm sewer, the sod, and the final lift of asphalt. And, so I haven't entered quantities there, but I certainly could, and then give you an engineer's estimate of where we think things will be. But, historically, yes, they've come in less than what the bid was. And so, if it's eighty-three percent, you would come in at like ninety-eight percent or ninety-seven percent, but I just haven't entered numbers at this time.
Okay. And, Part Six on the Parkview Road in Maple Ridge, line item 147 and 148, the current quantities are substantially higher than the quote. Is that due to that additional work that we had authorized them to do on Parkview?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I know we talked about this a couple of months ago, and there's an ebb and flow. Some things are high, some things are low. Hopefully, at the end of the day, things kind of balance out. But, that being said, line item four, the street sweeper and broom pickup, it's been, this particular pay request represents three weeks of work, the 21st of November to the 12th of December. There is over eighty hours of sweeping, which is two weeks, five, eight hours a day, five days a week for two weeks. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the numbers should be accurate based on the work that they did and that they agreed to. But, I know, yeah, we had, we usually estimate like twenty hours, and some projects, it comes in at that or less. And this one definitely with the, you know, the rain that we had and the cleanup that they had to do on streets was a lot more than what was estimated.
But, prior to the last pay request, there was only roughly thirty-five hours of street sweeper.
And I think sometimes, some of that is, you know, that we ask the contractor to submit us the slips. Our inspector kind of has a track of the quantities that he has, but sometimes they don't, they don't submit the slip to us. So, possibly on the last payment request, they hadn't submitted all their slips.
So, this eighty hours might not reflect this three-week period. It might reflect two months' worth of...
Correct.
Okay, then it's, then it's fine. That's all I had on that.
Alright. Hearing no further question on items A and D, I'm looking for a motion to approve the December accounts payable and pay request number four to Northdale Construction.
I'll make that.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Broda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright. Next item of business is our administrative reports, and we will approve all of them at the end. We will start with our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our monthly engineering report is in your packet, and we can answer any questions. I think the main work for this past month was, you know, finishing up some of the items for the winter on the 2018 street improvements, and then working on the comprehensive plan and some revisions. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for engineers? Alright. Thank you, Dan. Next, we'll hear from our city planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. During the last month, we also had a big push to get the comprehensive plan to a place where we could submit that. The only other thing of note, we're continuing to work on the downtown redevelopment site. We had a meeting with Hennepin County Library regarding that. We're continuing to work on the Gateway site. We've had a couple of meetings on some redevelopment. You'll actually see something coming forward in January, an application for renovation of the MPFC site. And then, I had a recent meeting with the owner of the 5300 Highway 12 property. You're going to see an application, I think, come forward for redevelopment of that building using the existing building by converting it to multifamily residential building. So, a couple of projects I think you're going to see in the next two months come through, so, pretty exciting.
Very exciting. Thank you. Any questions for our planner? Next, we'll hear from our Director of Public Safety.
Honorable Mayor and council members, before you use the November activity report, through November, we've handled 6,948 incident reports. Of 2,636 were in Maple Plain, and 3,817 were in Independence. You see, there's a typo in here as I read it now. It says for the month of October. Should be November, 313 incidents occurred in Independence. 166 were in Maple Plain for the month. I do want to draw attention to a correction. Since our last council meeting, Councilmember DeLuca discussed the fifty percent reduction in the criminal activity in Maple Plain. That did pique my interest to go back and look at the data and discovered that there is an addition in the Excel format in August of 2017, which artificially inflated the numbers from 2017 in comparison year-to-date. So, those numbers should have actually been fifty-two versus eighty-one, because it was inadvertently added the Independence criminal to the Maple Plain instead of the vice versa. So, therefore, it made 2017 seem a little bit higher. Now, the good news is, even with the correction, we did discover that there's still a twenty-five percent reduction in criminal cases in Maple Plain. And I thank Councilmember DeLuca for bringing that up, because I went back and just felt it seemed a little bit odd and wanted to address that with you guys here tonight, that we're still good in a sense of twenty-five percent down, but it wasn't fifty based on a clerical error by myself. So, my apologies to you on that. In regards to November, I can ask that be accepted as written, or if there's a couple of cases you'd like to discuss, I'd be glad to answer any questions on those.
Anyone have any questions, cases, or anything you'd like discussed? Thank you, Chief. Next, we will hear our administrative report from Public Works.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Just a few things that I think are worth highlighting from here on the memo is, Public Works has stayed busy. They worked with Northdale Construction on the water main replacement in front of the water treatment plant. We also experienced a water main break during that time, so that really got their attention. Otherwise, Public Works has been busy snow plowing and pre-trading the roads. We have had a few incidents over the last month or so. Otherwise, other than that, they've been working on a variety of different seasonal tasks, such as making Maple Plain look much more like the holiday season, which has been very nice. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the Public Works December monthly report.
Any questions regarding the Public Works report? Next, we'll move on to our administrative report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The administrative team has stayed very busy in December. Some of the things that we've been busy with is, we've worked on the comprehensive plan, as well as the preparing for the Veterans Memorial Park and moving forward with that project. We've also looked at, we also met with Hennepin County Library leadership with Mark and the planning department. And we have before you tonight liquor license applications, and we also had a pre-audit on Tuesday, December 11th. So, and that went very well. So, it was good to know. But, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the administrative report.
Any questions for administrator and administrative reports? With that, I am looking for a motion to approve administrative reports A through E.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember DeLuca.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Alright, motion carries. Next item of business is Resolution 18-1217-01, a resolution certifying the 2019 general fund budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is a resolution for approving the 2019 general fund budget. This is the, pretty much the exact same resolution that was brought in September. So, what we did experience is, for the 2019 budget, I understand it says eighteen there, it will actually have a, there's about a $58,864 increase to revenues. That's also reflected in expenditures. We're hoping, and I'm fairly confident, that we will experience higher revenues in nineteen than what's listed here. So, I'm really confident about that with some of the development projects that are coming down the line, that we're going to be in good shape there. All in all, there's no difference between the revenues and expenditures and other financing sources. We have a balanced budget, which is always good. And, yeah, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the general fund.
Any questions for staff? So, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 18-1217-01, the resolution certifying the 2019 general fund budget.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? This is resolution, so it will be by roll call.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Eyes have it five to zero.
Next item of business is another resolution, Resolution 18-1217-02, a resolution certifying the 2019 budget levy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is the final property tax levy for the city of Maple Plain, so it looks beyond what the last resolution that we approved, which was pertaining more to the general fund budget, and then also some other financing sources that make up the general fund budget. What we have here is really looking at what helps set up that tax base that was mentioned at the TNT meeting. We are one of three government prongs that make up that. So, this resolution refers to that conversation. Really, the general fund here you're looking at is a, has an overall after all of transfers and everything, day-to-day operations of an increase of about $6,000. Our EDA levy went down, so we're no longer levying for EDA, and our debt service went slightly up, mainly pertaining to the 2018 street project that happened on Howard and Independence. As a result, our total tax levy did go down about $11,680 throughout the entire city. So, I think that's, that's pretty good for the city of Maple Plain. That's two years in a row now. I believe we've been, we've had a lower levy below zero. So, that's, it's pretty impressive on everyone's part here. So, thank you for that. Otherwise, then, we break out kind of our bonds and what we're paying there. They're all general obligation, and the enterprise portion of it is taken out of here in these GO bonds. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to our tax levy for 2019.
Any questions for staff regarding the levy? Alright. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 18-1217-02, a resolution certifying the 2019 budget levy.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill.
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeLuca, and again, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The eyes have it five to zero.
Our next item of business is another resolution, 18-1217-03, a resolution certifying the 2019 fire department budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The resolution before you is to approve the 2019 Maple Plain Fire Department budget. The total that you see on the resolution is $444,643. This is not a bill that Maple Plain pays on its own by any stretch. There's a formula that includes the entire fire district, which includes primarily the city of Independence, Maple Plain, but also services areas in Medina as well, and Three Rivers Park District. That all helps make up what the expenditures are in this budget. So, with that, Maple Plain would obviously pay for a portion of that, but per the recommendation of the Fire Commission, this is the total that we have before you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to that.
Any questions for staff regarding the fire budget? With that, I'm looking for a motion to pass Resolution 18-1217-03, a resolution certifying the 2019 fire department budget.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Broda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Oops, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
The resolution.
That's alright. We'll go, Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Broda.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
And Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The eyes have it five to zero.
Alright. Our next item of business is to discuss and approve the minute policy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The minute policy in front of you, I brought back as part of the November meeting. It was recommended, it came back. There are a few changes on here. One, some of the language is cleaned up in here, and then as well, we added commission minutes in here, just as another, as another deal in here. And basically, really, what we're trying to make this is kind of as basic as possible, but as, you know, clear to it as possible. We're trying to leave some wiggle room, making sure that we hit all legal requirements or anything of extreme importance. But then also, we're really trying to capture the direction or the motion in these minute meetings, or meeting minutes. So, and that also is going to fall into commissions as well, and that would help save some staff time, and yet still capture the direction and decision by all these commissions and council. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the minute policy.
Any questions for staff?
Bobby, I think you captured the essence of this from last time. My suggestion I'd have is, I'm not sure this is a policy as much as a guideline. We're trying to provide guidelines to staff on what to do in minutes. Policy seems too legalistic.
Sounds good.
Any other thoughts, comments? So, if it is a guideline, do you still want it approved, or are we just...
No, as long as there's just kind of a general, you know, consensus from council, that this is, we're in the right direction here. We're, this looks good. Then, no action needs to be taken, or it's just a direction is being set from council to, that this looks pretty good. So, and then, we'll abide by these guidelines.
Is everyone in agreement with the direction written?
Yes.
That'd be fair.
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that back.
Absolutely.
Next item of business is to review and approve the liquor license applications for this evening.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We do, every year in December, we have to approve any liquor or tobacco license applications. All the liquor license applications go to the state as well. So, this is a state-mandated process that we go through. And the businesses this year that have applied for liquor licenses, for liquor licenses, is Blackwater Liquor Depot, Maple Plain Wine and Spirits, McGarry's Pub, and TJA Pub, which is also known as Monies. So, these businesses have gone through a process where they've had to fill out a lot of paperwork that includes listing a lot of references. Then, we also do background checks through West Hennepin Public Safety Department. They have also looked at all these applications and done, and have signed off on these background checks. So, all of these applicants have approved, or have passed this process to this point with city council. And so, at this time, staff is recommending approval of these liquor license applications, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the liquor license as presented by staff this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cahill.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Fay. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is to review and approve tobacco license application.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We only have one tobacco application this year, and it's from Liquor Depot. I know they've had a tobacco license for the last few years here in town. We've had other establishments that have had tobacco licenses, but for a variety of reasons, they have not carried on with those applications for this year. So, we only have one, and that application was filled out, and again, went through the proper channels with West Hennepin Public Safety. And at this time, staff would recommend approval of this tobacco license for Liquor Depot. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the tobacco license for Liquor Depot.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Broda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cahill. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our next item of business this evening is council reports and other business. Let's start with Councilmember Broda.
Have nothing to discuss in my report.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Cahill.
Just a thank you to the police and firefighters and everyone, the volunteers from the museum who helped us view Santa, and it was a great event. Despite the chilly weather, people turned out, and I hear we collected lots of food.
We did, twelve hundred and five pounds.
Oh, my goodness.
Wow.
Awesome. Thank you so much for putting that on. It's a great event.
It's a great event, and we very much love doing it for the community, and I think that's about 200 pounds more than last year. So, even with the poor weather, it shows you that people are still giving and donating to our local food show.
And thank you for making it a city event. I appreciate how the museum does the cookies, the fire department comes out and does the lights and fire. The city goes above and beyond in doing the lights, and it's just, it's become a beloved tradition that just continues to grow. So, thank you for leading it.
You're welcome.
Sorry. That's it. No, I'm good.
Councilmember Fay.
It's been a very late month. December has been, obviously, with the holidays and everything. But, I do want to take this opportunity, this is, I believe, Councilmember DeLuca's last official meeting in this capacity. I've worked with Mike on the planning commission for a year, and the city council for a couple of years. Gotten to know him personally and professionally. Outstanding character, able to dig into the complicated mess of budgets and stuff, and break it down and spit it back out to us so that we can understand it. And I am, I am grateful for that, and I'm grateful to call you friend. Good luck.
Thank you. No report.
No report. Alright. I've had a couple of meetings this month. The regional council of mayors was interesting. We had a panel. One of Dan's colleagues was there, and we talked about investing in a resilient infrastructure. So, very important topic for all of us, and I think as a city, we're doing a really good job, and we should be proud of the work that we're doing. The chamber meeting was a holiday meeting, and then we had election of officers for 2019. And the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, I had the honor of riding on the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train this year, and it was an honor to be a part of that humanitarian event. So, something different, kind of exciting for December. And I, as well, would like to thank Councilmember DeLuca. I remember when I joined the team, you were one of the first to welcome me and take me under your wing and answer all my stupid questions that I probably should have known. And I just really appreciate your passion for the city, your expertise, your attention to detail, and your leadership and your insight have all been invaluable, and you will be missed. So, thank you for your years of service. I don't know how many hours you've spent reading packets and doing research, and we probably don't want to think about it. You've probably definitely lost a little hair over it all, and we do appreciate. Oh, hey, I've gotten gray, so it's a lot of work. Alright, some of us lose it, some of us turn gray, but there's a lot of hours, and it's been some tough decisions, and it's not always an easy position to fill. And I just want to thank you publicly for your commitment to service to this community, and wish you well, and very excited for you as you have earned another title recently of grandpa. So, blessings to you in that next phase of life.
Thank you.
Mayor, staff would also like to thank Councilmember DeLuca for his time here. Mike's been on the council for over six years now with the city of Maple Plain, and has had a tremendous positive impact on the community in a multitude of ways that I couldn't sit here long enough to tell them all. But, Mike's also had a tremendous impact on me personally, professionally, and has helped me also... But Mike's also had a tremendous impact on me per, personally, uh, professionally, and, and has helped me, uh, also advance, in understanding and giving me a shot to serve here with the city, and, uh, has been a tremendous positive influence on all of staff here. And, uh, on behalf of staff and, and myself, uh, we would like to thank you so much for your service for, uh, here at the city of Maple Plain. Thank you, Mike.
At this time, are there any visitors to be heard this evening?
Uh, Madam Mayor, if, uh, if you'd so let me say a few words, I promise I won't keep you here very long. Um, but, uh, I'd just like to take this opportunity, um, just like you all did, and recognize council member DeLuca. Uh, council member DeLuca has been a friend of the fire department and Maple Plain Fire Department. He's always supported our firefighters, whether it's an open house, or a call, or coming to our training nights, or recognition nights. Um, he's always been there. Um, during Mike's tenure, he served on the fire, Maple Plain Fire Department and Independence Commission, or Partnership, whatever the name is that day. Um, and he's also served on, uh, our Relief of Board, um, Board of Trustees as well in most recent years. So, um, like to take this moment, Mike, if you'd come on up, uh, we have a plaque. Um, I have a plaque, um, from, uh, the entire Maple Plain Fire Department that just says, "Thank you, Council member Mike DeLuca, for your six years of service to the residents of Maple Plain." So I'd like to say thank you and best luck in future endeavors, and give that grandson of mine a hug.
Any other visitors to be heard?
Do I get the last word?
The mic is yours. You may close it out.
All right. Um, let me start with Gary and Justin. We have, I think, the finest police and fire departments in the state of Minnesota, and it's because of your folks' leadership. Your teams are outstanding. You know what service is. I wanna thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Our consultants, John, Dan, Mark, you have, you exemplify for me what public service is all about. You have your eye on the city and what's in our best interest, and I wanna thank you. Our staff, and I see Nicole out there, and our public works staff, and Sharon. Public service is not easy. It's hard work, and it's sometimes not very fulfilling at times, but know you're making a difference. I wanna thank you. Bobby, you're a wonderful administrator. I believed in you a few years ago, and I continue to do so today. You are the future of what public service is all about in cities, and I see great things for you in the city of Maple Plain and beyond. Dominic, I've gotten to know you, and you are an outstanding individual, and you keep people at the center of everything that you do. Never lose that. I thank you. Caitlin, you brought a unique set of gifts to this council. I've watched you grow as a council member, somebody that is willing to look at all sides of a, of an issue, research them, and really, I've seen you change your mind, I've seen you alter, and I've seen you research, and really come to what you believe in your heart is the best interest of the residents of Maple Plain. I thank you. John, my friend, I did spend some time with you on, on the planning commission. And you bring a very unique setting of gifts. You bring the ability to look at the detail. That is an invaluable piece of the work that the city needs. Never give that up. Thank you for that. And then I gotta turn to the mayor, my friend Julie. Julie, you are an exemplary mayor. You lead with both your head and your heart, and that sometimes isn't easy. It's hard to balance those two, but you have found a way to balance those. Dominic, Julie, John, Caitlin, and John Fay, you are the new council. John Tempe, excuse me.
We don't want to John Fay's.
You are our city council. You are my city council, and I expect next year nothing but greatness from the five of you. I'd expect nothing less, and I got a feeling I'm not gonna get anything less than that from the five of you. With that, I move, will you, jerk?
All in favor?
Aye.